Will you lead us into our invocation?
Yes, sir. Please pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, God, we love you. God, we just praise your name for all things. We thank you for the many blessings you give. God, tonight, we ask a special blessing on the Brandon family. We pray that you just be with them, Lord. Comfort them in their loss. Pray that you just continue to be with our first responders, Lord, who keep us safe. We ask that you keep them safe as they serve. And we ask for wisdom tonight, as important decisions will be made. Lord, we love you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Matthew, you gonna lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting. We'll start with our roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorton.
Here.
Marty Lindelberry.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Dina McKnight. Steve Pence. Don Rollins.
Here.
Our city attorney and city clerk are both present. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and I do have a couple of notes to make on that. Well, not really. Item seven. Item seven is a misprint, and we can discuss that when we get into item seven. So I think we can adopt the agenda as mailed, if no one has any objection to that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Do a motion and second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from July thirteenth. Do we have any changes that need to be made there? Do we have a motion?
I'll make it. Make the motion that we accept them as mailed.
Second.
Do we have a motion and second? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum. Is there anyone who would like to address the council tonight? Yes, sir. Come up to the podium, tell us your name.
My name is Justin Rizley. Want to thank the city and especially the Parks and Rec Department for clearing out the new hammock area down at Riverside Park. Chad and you guys have done a fantastic job. We had a group of students come and set up about fifteen hammocks in there the other night. Really enjoyed it. Just wanted to thank you guys for making that happen. Looks awesome. Can't wait to see when it's finished.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public forum and move into our business reports. First is the planning commission. Walter?
Good evening. So when I saw you, Superintendent Carnes came to our last meeting on the fifteenth, and he didn't have great news. Schools could be doing quite a bit better, and we could have a good bit more property in the city to help with that. So hopefully, we've also had our special meeting with Juliette Ritchie from Garver, and that's exactly what she's gonna be working on, is help us to get a better zoning idea of the balance between commercial development and residential. Because that's basically what it boils down to, for our schools to have more money and to have more kids in the school. You need to have more homes, and then plus then more businesses to have real property to assess that value and have it a higher value. So we're pushing forward with that, and it was really encouraging what Ms. Ritchie had for us. She came in and just really asked us some questions about what we would like to see happen with the growth and where we might think that should happen within the city. And she should be coming to us with a rough proposal, I guess, of a map, I think, for our next meeting. So hopefully, that does happen, and we can move quickly with that, because Highway seventy-one is gonna see development pretty soon. Any questions?
Any questions?
Sounds like she's moving quickly.
Yeah, we wanna move it quickly.
Yeah, she is. She's gonna have it by the next meeting. That's awesome.
Hopefully, yeah.
Not the entire meeting.
Not the entire, just a rough kind of...
But even a rough one, quick is not too tacky.
And we've got most of the text worked out the way we like it, so hopefully, we can marry those pretty easily.
Yes, you're wonderful.
No questions for Walter? So I will say this to the council concerning that meeting. One of the questions she asked the planning commission, and the question was met with some pause. But she asked each commissioner, why do you live in West Fork? And it took a minute, right? A lot of us grew up here. We don't know anyplace else, right? But that's not a very good reason. So anyway, I would just challenge all of you to think about that as we leave here tonight. Why do you live here? What is it that makes this such a great place to live?
Awesome. We were a little stumped.
Yeah. Nobody was ready for that.
Because we did.
All right, thank you, Walter.
Thank you.
Court report. Tracy?
You guys all have the report in front of you. Our numbers were down a little bit this month. The number of warrants that we issued was up a little bit, and that's because we had an off week where we didn't have court, so we had time to go through all the files. Or most of the files, you know, for people that haven't been paying and no way of contacting, that sort of thing. The good... Last week, we had trials here, and we had more people than we've had in the last year and a half. I bet there were twenty-five people that showed up that were here for trials. And normally, we have, I don't know, maybe six. It was busy. Not like it used to be still, but it was pretty busy, all things considered. And the other thing is that we got our scanning installed, and so we've started on that. So we're enjoying that, but we can't devote full time to it. You know, we still have to do all the other stuff. So anyway, slowly but surely, we're starting to get things scanned in, and the judge is all on board with that, too. He's ready to downsize some files and have them easier to access and that sort of thing. So I think it's going good.
Any questions for Tracy? Thanks, Tracy. Next is the library report. Shannon?
Well, we finished up our summer reading program, and we had about forty participants come to our finale. So we are regrouping in August, and as you all know, we're planning for our grand opening event, October third through fifth with Crystal Bridges. And we've really got four projects that we're focusing on this month. The landowner did agree to sell the land by the library to the city. I understand that there's still some discussion, lots split and appraisal, so I'm sure the mayor will get to that later. But why it's important to go ahead and have that verbal agreement back with the landowner, so we're not really stalling, is because the library is working on some other projects. Asphalt is one thing. So we are getting multiple quotes, but we're also realizing, and we've known, that we're gonna have some draining issues there. So it's important for us to go with the right company, so we're not turning around in some years and having to redo and spend even more money. So with the draining issues, we're talking to Beaver Watershed, but that all ties into where do we want to push the water? And if we know we have that land by the library, then we know how to build our parking lot, to create a rain garden, and then we also have this grant for the outdoor space that we have to use for outdoor furniture for programs. So how do we spend that money? Well, that all involves the parking lot and the draining, and whether we get the land by the library. So I'm saying all of that because the grant is on a timeline. We still have through June of next year, but we'd like to go ahead and start creating some of those things off of our wish list. And then lastly, we just wanna give a thank you to Shire Post Mint. They created a coin. I have it here with me, and it says, "Keep reading or pretty much go to bed." And all proceeds of that coin are being donated to the library, and they're donating quarterly. So they've given us our first check, and we just appreciate that local business support.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Any questions for Shannon?
How much is the coin?
It's a dollar, I believe.
That's all?
Mm-hmm.
Cool.
So just a little bit more information on what Shannon was talking about. And we'll get to that a little bit more in new business, but we put out bids for some paving. Chad had a project. Isaac had a project, and Shannon had a project. And so we put all that together, trying to... We thought we could get some better bids if it was a bigger project, if they could do three projects at the same time. Chad's project got kicked out of the entire package, and nobody bid on it. The same thing essentially happened with Shannon's project. The reason Shannon's was kicked out was a drainage issue. They said if they come in and pave what's there, it's gonna cause some even more problems. So that's where she's coming at. If we know we're gonna get that property, then we can start having a design. They're suggesting running the water to that lot. That's, I guess, the natural way for that water to shed there. So that's a discussion Isaac can talk a little bit more about. But just so you know where some of that's coming from, we're not doing any paving at the library because of drainage right now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Oh, Shannon, while you're up here, could you give us just a small update on Chad's project that all the department heads are doing right now? Is that going well?
He's doing a great job.
Yeah?
Yes.
And the project is going well? Everybody's enjoying meeting with one another?
Yes.
Yeah?
Thanks to Chad.
Fantastic. Thank you, Shannon.
Yes, yeah. We really are, though, enjoying having... We're always group setting and meeting, so that one-on-one time, you know, just to be able to see other people's view of things and work space, it has been really nice.
Cool.
Yeah, thank you, man.
All right. Next is our police report. In the absence of Chief Nelson, we have Officer Riley.
Sir. We're down on calls for service from last month, which is a good thing in my mind. We're down to three thirty-five calls this month, or last month, or the other. Hundred eleven warnings, hundred fifty citations, served fifty-two warrants, had two physical misdemeanor arrests, three felony physical arrests, and no property complaints. Any questions?
This is your chance.
What city ordinance was that, lady?
What's the ordinance?
Says eight city violations of city ordinance. Just wondering.
Did you work any actual city ordinances, Riley?
Uh, alcohol art.
So that would be one. I don't know of any other.
Probably.
I didn't write any.
I know there was some dogs or pig at large.
Continuing. But it's probably either animals or something of the part.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Officer Riley, thank you, sir.
Sir.
Hey, we got a nice letter on you last month. You weren't here, but I always appreciate getting those. So thank you for your continued service to the community.
Thank you.
Next, Public Works. Isaac.
Not just a great deal. This is our leak time of the year, so we're averaging a couple leaks a month or a week. We've been trying to clean up some of our messes that we've made throughout the year. I'm down one with COVID and still trying to observe boils as they do rehab. They have finished up Westwood. They're trying to clean up their mess now, and before they start the school. And they're looking at starting the school next week, the same week school starts, so...
It's great timing.
We did get bids for asphalt. Sadly, I had to dump Shannon's, or I wouldn't have got bids either. A lot of contractors contacted me and said they didn't wanna mess with that one because it had some drainage issues. So I have talked with Shannon. We're trying to work through some of the drainage issues. Maybe it's something we can do here in-house to get it more prepped for asphalt. With that, we did... Nick and I kinda threw together an addendum to the bid package and got it out there for our bidders, and we added more asphalt to James Place. It ended up being the rest of James Place. The contract bid come in, I think y'all have it in front of you. Most likely, what we're probably gonna do is take the fifty thousand that we had to pony up for the state aid paving that we're getting back, because we cut some of that project back. Use that, just go ahead and pave the rest of James Place. Get Andy. Don't have to come back to any more city council meetings.
Andy likes coming to city council meetings.
So...
No, that means he has to come back.
Yeah.
Now that it's done.
But yeah, that's about it. And we've been trying to keep up with grass and leaks and boils, of course, so... But they've been moving along pretty good. And the school project, well, I think they've saved the best for last. It's gonna be the most painstaking one, I believe.
I don't know. We've had plenty of emails from Westwood.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate you just copying me on all those, so I get them all, too. But yeah, it is going really well. I think it's gonna clean up well, so they're gonna get some new fencing back there, so hopefully, they'll be happy.
We'll see. So any questions for Isaac? Go ahead, Don.
Oh, it's just gonna be a smart lady.
So while Isaac's up here and Nick's here as well, we met three weeks ago at Greenland City Hall with the president of the Homestead POA and some other parties. There's been talk about Homestead tying into our sewer system for several years. The state has brought it up in some of the meetings we had with them when we were trying to get funding. Homestead has went through a couple different POA presidents. It's been brought up a couple of times, and then the state would reapprove their permit, and so it would kinda fall to the wayside. Right now, they're looking at... They have some more serious, substantial issues that have been brought to light. It's gonna cost them about twenty thousand to fix. I'm not sure if I made the council aware or not, but we received our rescue plan funds, and the county received funds for the Rescue Plan Act as well, right? So every county did, every city did. But I had reached out to the county, because these funds are earmarked for water and sewer type projects, runoff projects. So I'd reached out to the county, the county judged about it. Nick's reached out to the county, to the state. Basically, what we're trying to do is find a funding package for Homestead to tie into the West Fork sewer system, and we're trying to get a hundred percent funded for them and basically get them out of their improvement district loan that they're currently under and get everything done for them at no charge. So since that meeting, they had a POA meeting, and they used the community center to do that. They had asked us to come to that. That was last Friday, and they had, what, thirty or forty folks show up for that? We were there. We answered some questions, and I don't know that they took a vote on it or not, but...
They did.
They did take a vote on it. Do you know what... Is that in tabula?
There was no... No one voted no.
Okay.
So I think everybody there wanted to move forward with it.
So they're basically... They're saying, yes, we want to tie into the system? That gives Nick some ammunition for trying to get some more aid out of the state. And I don't know this for a fact, but I would presume that the state is gonna say, "Well, we're trying to figure out what we can do for you until we hear what the county and the quorum court say they can do," right? So I think once we get some numbers out of the quorum court, from what the county will help with this, I would think that at that point, the state would get a little more serious about trying to find some funds for them as well. So just so you guys know, that's something on the horizon. Have you guys heard more about it?
So Nick and I spent an hour before the meeting today. The state has another one point five billion for water and sewer stuff as well and stormwater and some other stuff. They've asked all the cities and utilities and whatnot to fill out their need survey, to put in there for their wish list. Nick and I were working on six for us, and Homestead is gonna be one of those as well. Nick is gonna fill out on their behalf to try to get some of that state funding to fund that project as well, so...
How many homes are in Homestead?
Maybe eighty?
Eighty.
Yeah, seventy-nine are it. They've got seventy-two.
Seventy-nine right now.
Yeah, there's seventy-two, and there's seven being built. I don't think they'll... I think there's one they said was an unbuildable lot, so they'll be built out, so... In addition to the West Fork sewer system.
In less than an hour, Nick and I come up with five and a half million dollars' worth of projects we can do here in town, so...
Good.
You got your move.
So that will be a good...
Excellent.
So it will be good for the city. Currently, they're outside the city limits.
They're in our growth, though, correct?
Well...
They're in the gray area.
They're in the gray area, because they're in ours and Greenland's. And so when that was built, it all went to Greenland's planning. West Fork never consulted about it.
Jeff Hawkins was very explicit. It didn't matter if we had contiguous city up to it, we could annex them in without it being in our planning area.
And then there's some talk in the POA about whether they will annex in, because we're currently gonna have to charge them an extra twenty-two fifty per month. That's what we charge for outside the city limits. I would think now that we have a sewer line that runs all the way to Baptist Ford, that should be West Fork's planning area at a minimum. So we'll see what happens there, for sure. One thing I didn't do, Nick, was, and I meant to, I apologize. Someone asked, they were concerned how Nick was getting paid. Nick is basically doing a preliminary design so that they can give some numbers to the state and to the county of what this is gonna cost. Nick said they were doing it pro bono. I did not... I felt like I should've said something about the work you've done for us and your company. Nick did pro bono work for the city until we were funded as well. So anyway, thank you for working with them. Thank you for working with us. You guys have been terrific.
It's worth it. It's, you know, it'd be a great project for West Fork and for Homestead. I mean, there's a lot of best at stake in that. Of course, we've been involved in it for years, too, so... This is an opportunity with the money that's coming down. I mean, this is unprecedented, I mean, for everybody. It's, you know, like, I said, when I sit down and figuring out projects, now's the time to ask, because the state doesn't know how much money they'll get for warrant sewer, but they're more worried about being able to spend it in five years than more than, you know...
We can help them with that, right?
Yeah, everyone's gonna try to help, so...
I just figured, as long as he's been here, he's one of us now.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. We do appreciate you.
I don't think there's just a whole lot of update on the sewer project. I know they're still trying to hammer out some punch list items and...
Yeah, that's the main thing. We got the change order that I can talk about when that comes up. And then just really, the closure plan is the big thing, you know, getting a revised plan together, getting it to DEQ before the end of the month, getting an extension. We're having some struggles with options and with White River coming up with some feasible options, so... You know, it's been a struggle, but we're gonna get there. We have to here in the next couple of weeks, so it'll come together.
Okay. Anything else for Isaac? Thank you, sir. Officer Riley? I didn't ask, but are you guys going to be doing traffic control in that first week of school?
Yes, sir, there'll be two, as I imagine.
Okay.
Morning and evening.
You keep calling him officer, that's sergeant.
Thank you. Sergeant Riley.
There's not a sir on either of them.
Listen, it matters.
Not a sir on the back end of it.
Probably is. Sir. All right. Parks?
Mr.
Mr. Harris?
So a couple of big items that I have to report on are actually on the agenda, so I'll hold off on those till we get to them. But I do wanna mention the hammock area that Justin mentioned. It was just a growed-up area that we couldn't mow or anything, and it was a good group of trees. We went down there, we cleaned it up, we got rocks out of it, we trimmed the trees up. Now we're trying to fill some real low areas just to make it a more usable area, and we felt like it was a great place to be able to put hammocks. We're gonna add some signage and stuff as well and promote it a little bit more when we do get it done. But I don't know if y'all saw the pictures that Justin put on, but it was pretty cool. So I was like, "Oh, you can put five or six hammocks in here." And then he'd go in and put fifteen, said he could put a whole lot more. So, okay. Evidently, they're a little more up on hammocking than I am. Also, our fall ball registration is still going on. We've not had... We've had a lot of interest, but not a lot of teams officially sign up, but it's like most things, the programs that we do, they wait to the last minute. So I'm hoping that in the last few days, it goes through next Monday, that we'll get some more teams and be able to move forward with that. The... At all the big pavilions at the parks that have lights, we've swapped all those out for LED, all the fixtures, security lights, everything. We purchased them ourselves and installed them ourselves, so it was much cheaper than any of the estimates we got for somebody to come in to do that. They're a lot slicker. They just look better. There's not forests bolt hanging down to tempt the kids to sword fight with and things like that. It's... They look better. They'll be much more efficient energy-wise as well, so... And that's about it. The accident with the truck, the truck hasn't been repaired, and our motor trailer has been replaced as well. So that's... Well, we'll still wait on checks, but I did go ahead and get in the trailer, but the check's coming for the trailer, so... Other than the items that are on the agenda, that's all that I have, I think.
Any questions for Chad?
What was your paving project? The trail, the bike and pedestrian trail that's on the agenda.
Any other questions for you?
No, but after the last meeting, me and Pitt did go down there and look at the Paul Mueller sign. It's awesome.
It is.
It's really nice.
Very happy with the way it turned out, so...
So a couple of things to add. With Chad's project, as I said, I'm meeting with each of the department heads as well on their... Since there's only seven of them, whoever the odd man out gets to meet with me. And so I've met with Chad. I met with a couple of the department heads, and Shannon's was a pretty good meeting. She put me to work at the library. I didn't check out any books, but I feel like I almost could. But Chad gave me a tour of the parks, and so I'm gonna recommend this to all of the council members. I enjoyed our trip, in all seriousness. He took me and showed me where the Hammock Park was going. But he took me down to Carter, and they'd made some changes to the disc golf course, just opened some things up, did some other mowings. I highly recommend you guys going down there and walking it. I went home that night and grabbed Leslie and Austin and said, "Hey, we're going for a walk." And we walked the disc golf course. It's a great walk. It's shaded, it's pretty down along the river. It's fantastic. But also, go down there and look at... So Chad and several of Isaac's guys have done a lot of clearing down there around the outsides. There's bridges and stuff down there I never knew were down there. But it was... That park was designed for this trail when it was initially put in, and so they had bridges and some walkways across the ditches and stuff already there that had just grown over over the course of the years. And anyway, the guys have got them all cleaned up, and you can see where the trail's gonna go around it. Chad says it's three-quarters of a mile. It looks a lot bigger than that to me. But yeah, take a trip down there, and if you have time one evening, go walk the golf course. It's worth your time.
If you don't wanna walk it, call me. I'll give you a ride around it. I'll give you a tour that way. But in the main, right, Danny went down there with the sidearm and really did a lot of work, saved us a lot of time and energy and things that needed done. I'm down there a lot, and I didn't realize it also once we got it cleaned up, where that trail was originally planned to go. But now that we've got it cleared, and it's gonna be really nice once it's done.
All right, thank you, Chad. Chief Myers?
Pray for me. I'm the odd man out this week, so hopefully, I can live up to Chad's standards.
Hopefully, I get to drive a fire truck this Friday.
That's what it takes to top Chad during the...
Just remember.
Let you spray water and everything, you bet. Sixty-three calls for last month, which was down from what we've done so far for the year, but I still think it's still all about from last year even, but of course, with that, our COVID-related calls are going through the roof all over the county, so. We were blessed to get to go help Unity Baptist Church with V B S one night, one of them spraying some of the kids and which is awesome for us because we have more fun doing it than they do. We're glad we get to do stuff like that. We do have an organization that may be able to help the county with some air packs buying for our county. Keep fingers crossed, hopefully that'll come through. The school is donating us a school bus, which is awesome to give us some training on extrication that we don't normally get to do. So that's gonna be really beneficial. We're gonna try to turn it into more of a a multi-agency training because it's something most people don't get to do. Sergeant Collins, I'm assuming we're still on with West Fest, so.
As of now.
Gear enough for the pancake breakfast, providing that we don't get shut down for that, so. Other than that, it's just been a normal month. All I got.
Any questions?
Glad I had this blue other truck today. It went a quarter of a mile.
Where would you be without?
Maybe if I, he calls it my toilet paper list, so maybe I'll have a bigger piece of paper to be there too.
All right. Christie, it's good to have you back with us this month.
Thank you. Uh, okay, finances obviously look really good. We've increased our bank balances by three hundred and forty thousand. We are four hundred and seventy-one thousand under budget and our sales tax is pretty leveled, it's leveled out this year, but it's still up a total between the two eleven percent this year. Hopefully you can see on the report there that I've added a line for the American Rescue Plan account balance. I want to keep that separate from our other bank balances so that it doesn't inflate our bank balances that are separate from that. The the American Rescue Plan is gonna be very important for us to keep those funds separate and to know exactly where we are on those, what we spend on those. We are, Isaac and I are talking a lot about different ideas. He's trying to get some priorities. Trying to get some different ideas of how he, what he would like to see with some water projects on that. Once we can kind of get some estimates on that and get priorities, we'll start doing a lot of research on having the right documentation and proof that we're spending the the funds the the way we want to and so forth. So we'll be coming back to you with how we want to actually spend those funds. We're not in a huge hurry. We want to make sure that we do it in the right manner and that we have all the reporting correct and uh, Tom may be able to help me with this, but I think the Department of Finance or Department of Treasury is still, they still don't have their reporting portal out.
Not for our side city, only for.
Right, for the large metros.
Well, large metros, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so we have reports due in October. No way to do those reports yet, so.
It's gonna be okay.
There, it's it's gonna be a process, but the money's sitting there. We have it, it's earning interest and we'll just sit on it until we know what to do with it. We'll get this deposit this year, we'll turn around next year and get the exact same amount of money. Although there's a possibility to maybe potentially get a little bit more because of cities that turned it down. So anyway, we'll we'll be hearing a lot about American Rescue.
Who would do it?
Plan money in the next six years. The, I do want to point out on the financials for the Water Department. The sewer sales and our cost for sewer this month for Fayetteville was, we were ten thousand dollars. We spent more, ten thousand dollars more than we actually earned. Um, if you look at the year-to-date, um, we've earned three hundred and sixty-five thousand and spent two hundred and eighty-nine on treatment alone. I did send an email today to A N R C to let them know that on average, we are only making a little over three thousand dollars a month. So in in a seven-month average, we've only made about three thousand dollars a month over our treatment costs. Um, beginning January, we have a bond payment of fourteen thousand dollars a month due. So that's not good, not a good position to be in, and I've sent A N R C an email today. Hopefully we can kind of get the urgency out there to them that we're feeling, that we we need to to know what our options are as far as a rate analysis. Um, we had, Isaac had, Isaac and Nick had a sewer construction meeting uh, this week and Alan kind of looked at us like a deer in the headlights when we said something about a rate analysis. But he's not necessarily the correct person for it either, so hopefully with the email today, we can get something started on that and start working on a plan towards other options to help offset that cost. Any questions?
Thank you for highlighting those two accounts, by the way. Did everyone notice that, that Christie had underlined those?
Yeah.
No questions for Christie? I don't either, for now. Thank you, Christie. All right, we do not have any old business. Uh, we do have some new business. Item one, accept the resignation of Alderman Steve Pence. Steven has moved to Kansas City to take a new job. And so we don't have any choice but to accept. He is no longer a resident of the state.
He moved there on purpose?
He did.
I make a motion to accept it.
I second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor say yes. If opposed, no, that motion carries.
So mayor, we're in that place where, you know, we have to do call elect, the council to elect as a replacement at the next regular meeting after we declare a vacancy. Do you want to declare a vacancy now or do you want to declare that okay? So I think you just say, with no objection, you're gonna declare the vacancy, so that'll be in the minutes and we'll appoint at the next meeting.
Okay, with no objection, we will declare that seat vacant and we will try to appoint someone at the next meeting. Okay. Item two, resolution two zero two one dash zero six. Authorize membership of the inter-local purchasing system, also known as TIPS. Christie can explain this far better than I, if you guys need explanation, but as you know, the city is required to get bids for different projects. In particular, Isaac is trying to get a truck. Uh, there are no trucks on the state bid system. So TIPS is another set of vendors who have been vetted by the state so that we can buy straight through them. And it's essentially the same thing as using the state bid system. It just, it it broadens who we can use. How'd I do? Pretty good.
More products, yeah.
Yeah, more products, uh, more vendors. Uh, they've all been vetted by the state, uh, so nothing changes there necessarily. It just broadens our search. So, uh, this resolution would authorize us to become members. There is no charge for membership. If if say Louis Ford wanted to be a member of TIPS, they would pay to be vetted whereby the cities do not have to to pay for membership. This is pretty, TIPS is used a lot by the school district because they're under the same rules as us essentially. And and several cities use it. Uh, we've just never had the need for it, but it's kind of hard to get a vehicle, so. Matter of fact, police department's still looking for a vehicle. We have a vehicle, we just, we don't have it.
It'll be returned now in twenty twenty-three.
Fantastic. So do we have any discussion on TIPS?
Can I make a motion to approve?
I second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion carries. Chad? Come on up. I'm sure there's gonna be questions about this. Item three, Parks budget adjustment. Parks wants to pull sixty-five thousand dollars out of their reserve. That's the Parks Fund Reserve, uh, to be used for reconstruction on Field Two at Carter Park, which is the high school baseball field.
Yes.
Explain why we need that, Chad?
Well, put it simply, that field was not constructed properly in the beginning, and that's not just my opinion. That is my opinion after working on it for seven years, but it's also the opinion of people that I've had come look at it and give me options and ideas on how to fix it. Uh, it's just, it's the lowest part of the park. It was not built properly. The lowest point in that field is behind the pitcher's mound in front of second base, which most typically is your highest point of any field. It's turtled backed and everything runs off of that. So all the water from essentially most of the park runs to that and we've tried to fix it ourselves over the years. This is something we've looked at doing. But because of this kind of cost, we've tried other options and also know some of y'all have kids and grandkids and different things play on it and know seeing what it's like when it comes to big rain. Really, it doesn't even have to be a big rain and it just, it's gotten to the point that to continue to use this without just continued sinking money into it, we we've added drainage, we we've tried to fix some of the elevation problems ourselves, uh, different things, and it's just, nothing's worked. It's all been Band-Aids and it's just gotten to the point that it needs to be started over and built properly. And we're just talking the infield and we looked at several different options, got some different ways to go, but this is essentially the the best value and the best thing to do to fix this field properly to eliminate so much of the money that we are sinking into it yearly, trying to keep it playable, plus the the countless hours of maintenance on this field to, we spend more time on this field than we spend on all the others together, just to get this thing where we can play on.
And if you go down there, um, when I when I was touring the park with Chad, from if if you go down by the tennis courts and start walking in, if you'll look, you can see that's a, it's, there's a low spot. It's noticeable without without shooting it for grade. It's terrible, so.
And this is gonna be done by a company that actually, this is what they do. They just got through redoing Two and Green Forest that are beautiful. They they they, this is what they do. They're not, I mean, they come in and they they build and they fix ball fields and and they're gonna raise it up, they're gonna, so, and this is a turnkey thing. When they get done, the bases will be back in place, the home plate, the mounds, everything will be done. This is a, this is a turnkey project and they surely they can get it done and the field will be playable when we need it in in the early part of next year, so.
Is it guaranteed, Chad? They guarantee it to be properly done?
I I'm not sure there's any guarantees, but yes, it's gonna be built properly.
Okay.
Yes.
It it is a company that that's what they do.
Yeah.
As opposed to.
We've talked to several people that's dealt with them, have them do things, and we feel very confident that they know what they're doing and and this will, this will solve ninety-nine percent of the problems that we have on that field. And it's really, you know, it's just I'm to a point that it it's gotta be done.
Yep.
And we have the money in reserves. We haven't, we've been fortunate to put money in reserves you know, in over the last several years and and we haven't taken any out in quite some time, and this is something that's very needed, I I believe, so.
Well, it's connected to the school, too. I mean.
It is. It benefits them as well and and it it, the field plays great. When it's dry, it's just not dry enough, so it's just.
I make a motion that we grant it.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Is there any other discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor say yes. If opposed, no, that motion carries. Thank you, Chad. Okay, good. So item four, ordinance number four nine nine, annexation of the province property on North Centennial. Uh, this piece of property is, if you're going out of town, just as you start down the hill on Highway seventy-one before you get to the uh, the little storage building, uh, manufacturing place, this is that piece of property that's on the west side of Highway seventy-one. It's been for sale for quite some time. It goes down in, it drops off the hill. Is everyone?
Is that part of Little Dry Creek Farm?
Yes. Used to be. It's been split off, but. Does everyone kind of know what I'm talking about? There was fifty acres down there. Um, it was looked at at one time for a veterans rehabilitation center. That fell through. A lot of that property's in the flood zone. It is now, can we share that council meeting? I think so. So Carolyn Ram, uh, as you guys may remember, she brought an event center to us about three years ago. She is looking at purchasing this and and putting an event center down there. Um, so the owners of the properties are are asking for the annexation, for us to annex it into the city. It does meet up with some other property in the city, so we're not creating an island. But that's, that will be the next steps is she will be looking to to put some development on.
That's a good idea.
We have a motion?
I make a motion to accept it.
Second.
We're gonna suspend the rule and that's a motion to suspend the rule.
To suspend the rule.
And place a certified reading and say you can take a roll call.
Okay. So Jeff is making a motion to suspend the rules on this. And.
We have a second?
It was the second.
Second, green.
And that's a roll call.
Okay. So, and this is going to put it through immediately? Is that what we did?
Yeah, after that, I'll read the title and then we'll load it.
Okay, all right, so roll call, suspend the rules, Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindelberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, the title of the ordinance, accepting the annexation of certain territories of the west, city of West Fork, approving a schedule of services. To extend the city area and assigning such an area to a ward and zoning and it makes sense just to check the services. Police and fire immediately, public street maintenance immediately. You okay with that?
That's C M S seventy-one. We don't have street down there, so.
And solid waste disposal, that's fine. Okay, so mayor, you could take a motion to pass.
I make a motion to pass.
Second.
Motion in second.
That'll be the roll call.
Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindelberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
And Don Rollins?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes. They are officially annexed. Uh, new business number five, ordinance number five hundred. Uh, we're asking to waive bids on the Carter Park Trail Project by reason of no bids received and give the mayor permission to negotiate a contract. Chad, you want to talk about this?
So as has been mentioned, we did not receive any qualifying bids for bike and pedestrian trail project at Carter Park. Uh, I think mainly Isaac probably agree that it was just a project that wasn't wasn't quite big enough. They're very busy right now and the paving companies didn't want the project. They don't have to prep it, do the site work, elevation work and asphalt, but they're they're looking for places they can show up and pave and move on. So I I feel like that's probably the most thing. There was a lot of work, but it wasn't quite big enough for them right now as busy as they are. So we did not receive any bids, so so basically our next step is if if we can waive the bid process since we didn't receive any bids, then we can move forward to getting estimates. I think it's gonna be a good thing because I've talked to a few people and I actually think we can, we can get the project done cheaper. By doing this route, we're gonna break it up, probably take take get estimates on doing the site work and the asphalt work separately. And it could still be the same company, but it could be dealing with two different companies and I I just think that that's our our best way to move forward. I mean, our only option otherwise is to re-bid it and probably be in the same boat that we were in, so. To move forward, uh, if we can waive the bid process, then we can start getting estimates, collecting those and and the project will still be within our budget. We have this money budgeted to do this project. So it'll still be within that budget. Uh, we can, it won't hold us up timeframe-wise to have to re-bid and go through that process again. Ultimately, I I do believe in some of the people I've talked to already that that it'll actually probably be a cheaper process. Save us some money.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Do we have any discussion on that?
Yeah, how long it will take. I mean, I guess, once you are able to-
Um, once they get started, I really don't think it'll take that long. It's just a matter of when we get to it. And that'll be part of who we decide and work with and negotiate a contract with. Or have something to do with who can get to it. Cause we really like to get people. It's a project we've been working on for a long time, trying to get it going. So we, we were ready to last year. We told it got booked back some wrong, but-
Jen, that motion was a motion to suspend the rules.
Yes, it was.
All right. And, yes, Misty?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindelberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
And Don Rollins?
Yes.
All right. So that motion passes to suspend the rules. Attorney Kiklak will read the title only.
Sure. So, Christie, is it really the first time we, in your memory, we've ever done this?
Yes, sir.
It's the first project I've bid. I've had to put out for bids since I've been here. And guess what? It didn't go well.
So it's an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the construction of an eight-foot asphalt hitch trail around Carter Park in the Steve West Fork park and stall.
Okay. Do we have a motion to pass that?
I have a motion.
One second.
We have a motion and second. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindelberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
And Don Rollins?
Yes.
Okay. That motion passes. Thank you.
Pete, would you do a separate motion to authorize you to, to-
Negotiate.
Contract, so that we'll have that in the minutes separately for the ordinance?
I would make the motion to authorize you to-
Negotiate the contract.
Negotiate the contract, yes.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Uh, item number six, review bid tabulation for James Street paving. Authorize the mayor to negotiate contract with the lowest bidder, Emory, Sap, and Sun, not to exceed seventy-two thousand, three hundred, eighteen dollars and thirty cents.
I have a motion that we approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and second on that. Is there any discussion? Any questions on that?
Been discussed for years.
Needs to be discussed.
Please hurry.
It says three hundred cents? All right. We have a motion and second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries.
It was a second.
Uh, Misty?
Well, it was a tie.
It was a tie.
Oh, no, she's quicker.
Jan, okay.
All right. Item number seven is a change order for sewer construction from Boyle's Construction. Uh, that shows that it's a change order for fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. While we are adding, um, some construction fees, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, there is actually, we are actually, Nick has got this project coming in under budget by two hundred and twenty-two thousand and some change. So essentially, this change order for fourteen thousand dollars is going to net us two hundred and seven thousand in funds that we're not gonna expend.
That's a new break.
I can talk about it, if anything.
Is it, you guys?
That's a new break.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're calling it a, uh, I'm calling it a partial reconciliation. We usually do that in the project with quantity, since it's unit price will, some things you, you, you spend a little bit more, some things a little bit less. Well, we wanted to, I guess, free up some of those funds. We knew it was running under budget. We wanna get that money back in the pot for ANRC to help finish out plant closure and other activities. Um, thought it'd be a good time to offset that, cause the contractor had a few items they needed to do to finish out the project. And I did wanna note, if y'all read through there, that, you know, there's three, three items there. Um, two of the three items, six point two and six point three, are gonna be paid a hundred percent by city of Fayetteville. Those are items that they've requested happen. So the, really the only adder for West Fork is that fifty-four hundred dollars under item, six point one. But like the mayor said, it's a, about a two hundred and eight thousand dollar credit back when we're done with this. And then we'll have another adjustment at the end. Can't guarantee it'll go down that much, but it may go down a little bit more. We're, uh-
Yeah, it's good regardless.
Yeah, we're just, we're trying to clean up the contract as we get closer to being done. So. Any questions?
Just one. If I gave you my personal budget, could you-
If I could do that on my own personal budget, I wish I could.
This is one of the quirks of magic there.
I make a motion. We approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Okay, other business. Uh, we discussed last month, uh, purchasing a lot by the library and selling the lot up at City Hall. I thought the lot at City Hall, I thought there were two lots there. There's not. There's one. So we are going to ask the planning commission to split that lot up there. And then we're gonna get, um, a market analysis on it, some sort of an appraisal, right? So that we have some idea of what that lot is marketable for. We have met with the guy who owns the lot by the library. He's asking forty-seven thousand, five hundred for that. Crazy world we live in. So, so we know what, what he wants there. Is that giving anyone heartburn?
Yeah. I've got an empty lot. Is he interested in buying it?
What, what did the lot sell across the other side of the library?
I, I think it was forty-two five, John. It's either forty-two five or forty-five five. And, and I don't, I don't hold me to it, but it was. Does anyone know? Can someone correct me on that?
Forty-two five.
Forty-two five?
Is that lot bigger, the one that we're looking at? Cause that's a tiny lot that they, they're building a house on.
They're about the same size, square footage wise, I believe.
So I'll tell you what, uh, the guy with the lot by the library told me, what he is, what he is asking is what he paid for the lot, plus his tear down cost. Cause he tore down that house. It had the cellar on it that they had to basically tear out, fill in. Um, and he, he's trying to make a five thousand dollar profit.
Can't blame you for that.
Yeah.
I don't think it sounds too terribly out of whack for the time we're in.
That, that's, that's where the real shock and awe came from.
Year and a half ago, it would be different.
Year and a half ago, that was, you know, a fifteen, twenty thousand dollar lot?
Exactly. Oh, wow.
So are we, are, are we at a point where we can tell the owner of the lot, the city council is still interested?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. We need it for the library. We just have to swallow that pill, John.
I'm one voice. Okay.
Just gotta swallow that pill.
Well, I mean, in, in turn, our half a lot, or whatever that is over that we have, is way more of a prime area. So it technically should be worth-
And it's-
Way more than what those lots are worth.
True. Yes.
So, I mean, you know.
Such as times.
Such as the times. Okay. So Shannon, I think you can go ahead and let Doug know that city council, did not have a stroke at the price. We're still on board.
We're, we're gonna survive it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other new business, or other, other business. I want to bring up with the council, um, and with Attorney Kiklak, the possibility, at least the discussion and the process of adding a short-term rental tax to the city of West Fork. Um, I'm not a big tax fan, uh, of any tax. However, most towns have a hotel motel tax. And so anytime you're renting something, you're renting it for less than thirty days, it falls under the short-term rental tax, and they're getting some extra tax. And so this, this comes into play for hotels and motels. Well, we don't have any hotels and motels, but what most cities are doing, and I think Tom can support this, is, uh, most cities are applying that same ordinance to their Airbnbs. Uh, for two reasons. One, to collect some tax on them. Two, um, as an attempt to identify all of them. So, uh, we, and we need to do some work there. Our new zoning ordinance is gonna help with some of this. But right now, you could technically put in an Airbnb and never notify the city that it's there. As opposed to, an Airbnb, um, in the, in its definition from the Internal Revenue Service is Airbnb's a, just a small business. Okay, there's, there's, you're not renting out a residential house because it's short-term, so it's a business. Our businesses, we're required to come in and get a business license. They're required to collect sales taxes, different things. So I would like the council's discussion on what you think about implementing a short-term rental tax. And then if, if you guys think that's a good idea, we'll talk to Tom about where to go from there.
Can we not require them to have a business license if it's a business?
So currently, no, because we don't have anything in our ordinances anywhere that says Airbnb or short-term rental. We will have, as soon as this new zoning ordinance is passed, yes, they will have to get a, a business license.
Okay.
Or at least register with the city. Uh, we'll figure out the-
Business license.
Yeah, I think so.
If they're a business, they should get their license like everybody else. But you're trying to put a target on us. I mean, we just had to raise a sewer. Now you're gonna want us to rate to add a tax.
What's, what's everyone's thoughts about?
So what all would this tax be put on?
Uh, essentially, uh, in the city of West Fork right now, it would be put on Airbnb. Uh, what would fall under it is if, uh, if somebody built a hotel, if somebody came in and had like an equipment rental business, uh, that would fall under it. Basically, anything that's rented for less than thirty days. So like, um, you're, if you're renting your house, that's a long-term rental. It doesn't fall under this. So it, it's basically gonna be on short-term rentals.
So no rental properties?
No. As long as you're not renting it out by the day or by the week, and then-
Are you thinking, how about A and P?
Yes.
So it's an A and P tax?
Yes.
So what about like, um, I know that some people like during bikes, blues, and barbecue, like maybe they've gone to camper or something and they rent that out for, you know, the weekend or something.
So I will tell you that as soon as the new zoning ordinance comes in, that will be finished.
I don't even, I would say-
But yes, that will fall under, yes.
You know, I mean, I've seen that listed.
Yes. That will, that would fall under.
I think many, many communities and towns are doing it. So I personally don't put the target on me, I guess. Um, I don't think it's a bad idea to discuss it and... Does anybody know how many Airbnbs or Verbos are in West Fork? Anyone?
No, two.
Shannon knows.
We, I think we've had three actually come and ask for a conditional use-
Yes.
Since I've been on the planning commission.
So I had Shannon look this up the other day, and what did we come up with?
The number popped up nineteen in the area, but when you look at the map, it looks like five to six are just pretty central in the primary area of West Fork.
I also think, personally think that our town is, um, it's pretty charming and quaint and safe. It's a good place to, you know, you can walk. If you wanted to come and stay for a weekend or a week even, it might not be a bad place to vacation, as close it is, as it is to Fayetteville. Um, so I think that this might also, I mean, not that anybody wants to make, you know, have more taxes, but I just think it would be, I don't think it's a bad idea.
But it's not gonna affect our- It's not going to affect our citizens of West Fork in any way unless they own an Airbnb.
That is correct, at this point.
But in essence, you-
So when you say that, what else could it?
Like I just said, if somebody built a hotel, or if somebody could-
Whoever's renting is gonna pay.
Or, or rent a trailer. That would also be somebody, somebody need a flatbed trailer or rent it for them. You know, that would too also, you know, be taxed. So it's all, all short-term, all short-term rentals regardless of housing or not.
Uh, real quick, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure about the short-term equipment rental part.
I'll answer that, okay.
I, I thought it was a, we used to call it a hamburger tax. Sometimes it's called a hotel motel tax. But here it's called all those things. You hear it called AP tax. There are two ways, two things you can charge it on, and those are prepared food or, and/or, hotels, you know, and now short-term rentals, eighteen. If, if Airbnbs didn't exist, of course, before, when this tax was written, so. But the, the, the thing to know about this tax is, you can do one penny, two penny, three penny, is, um, you don't put it in the general fund. It, it goes to, um, if you adopt it by, as a city council, it's the only tax you could adopt as a city council. And when you do, the money goes to what's called the AMP commission. You have to form that commission and you gotta find, you know, five or six or seven good citizens who are willing to serve on that commission. And one of them has to own, uh, your short-term rentals. And one has to be a B and B owner. One would have to be a restaurant owner, or someone that did prepared food if you applied to that. And then other business people in the area. And they decide how to spend that money, and they're limited in what they can do. And they can basically advertise and promote the city. And that's what they do. So, um, you know, they might, uh, get a billboard. They might, um, well, of course, they're godless, but they, and they might, um, uh, do flyers. They might do radio spots. They might build a garden along the road to enhance the, the way the city looks, to attract more people. They might throw a festival. But so the money doesn't get used by the city of West Fork. Christie wouldn't ever see the money. Of course she would, because when they start off, they don't have any staff. And so they'll use me free, and they'll use you free. But, um, two council members could be on that commission. Uh, and so two of you would probably serve on that commission as well. The only way to not have a commission with this kind of tax is to have an election. And you could ask the people to, um, approve this tax. And if they did, then you would completely bypass the commission and the money would go to parks. It would go directly to parks, and it couldn't be used for anything else. Now parks has a definition. The definition isn't just, you know, uh, the dirt for the baseball field. It is everything from lighting to, could be transportation, to all facilities around a park. You know, the roads and streets, the, the trails, all that kinda thing. Johnson just did this. The Johnson, city of Johnson just had an election for an AMP tax, uh, because they wanted to bypass that commission, um, at least initially. Now, uh, I've heard, the politics of that situation were that if it passed, the mayor committed to the business community, he would also pass another penny, um, from the city council, so there could be an AMP commission. So they could look about, you know, marketing the city of Johnson. Um, that hasn't happened yet. But they did pass a tax, and I think come January, it'll start getting collected on their hotel and on all the restaurants and prepared food. And prepared food would be something you buy at a grocery store that you can eat right then. Uh, any soda that you get from a fountain, um, anything like that is prepared food. I don't think it applies to the school. So that, those are the two things. I'm sorry to lecture, but that's, this is an odd little thing. The only other thing I say by way of editorializing, which I shouldn't do, is the politics of using this money have in places turned really, really vicious and raucous. And, uh, you know, if you've paid attention to the way Fayetteville does it, they, you know, they give out money to projects. Someone comes up and says, I wanna have a unicycle festival. And they'll go, okay, here's five thousand dollars, go have your festival. And, you know, they get a plan and they get, uh, they, they test them on it. They ask them about it. And they decide what projects to support throughout the year. Um, some of them, like in Eureka Springs, if you go to the meeting, maybe tonight, there's probably gonna be people at each other's throats because somebody wants to do pamphlets and somebody wants to do radio ads. Somebody wants to do signs and somebody wants to put signs on buses. And so they're arguing about how to spend that money. Probably not a lot of money in West Fork. So a little bit of money to detract a lot of aggression, but a lot of money does. And I've, I've seen it happen several times. Just so, you know, what you know, if you're thinking in the future. Um, so if you wanna put it on the ballot, you could do a little election for, um, you know, just, just to support parks. And there's a certain kinda grace behind that reasoning, right? People come to town.
Right.
They wanna use the facilities, so you're- They wanna use the facilities, so you're, you're supporting those facilities.
And so, does it, Tom, does it have to be food and?
No, sir.
So it can just be the short-term?
Yes, sir.
The, the hotel, more hotel-focused, okay?
Yes, sir.
Well, we have enough trouble getting people to just come to whatever, how are you gonna get another group of people to show up for, you know, some other committee?
Well, we, it's not a committee, they're talking about a commission, and we stopped those a long time ago and went to committees.
Whatever you can, you're right.
You can call it whatever, but how are you gonna get them to come to you?
I know.
The law would require it to be a commission.
Would it have to be, would we have to have a commission if it went to the parks?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
And, and I think too, if, you're right, we did eliminate commissions, but we eliminated, part of that was because the commissions we had could, um, could take out loans in the city's name without city's permission. And so I don't think that would be, I think there would be verbiage that did not allow that, am I correct in that?
So the, the commission becomes this autonomous thing, and, uh, it cannot encumber city property. You can't use it in, in any way as collateral or anything like that, but they, they spend money, they hire staff, they borrow money, they can issue bonds. Now, again, we're, I think a long way away from that, but that is, uh, one of the sources of political rancor, uh, in places, where there's a lot of money coming in.
So if, even if it's just a small amount of money though, it, I would much rather see it go to our city somewhere than just be used to run a commission. I mean, Chad could use the money, there's no doubt about that, you know, for his parks.
So I think it's something to consider.
Something to discuss some more.
Yes.
Yeah, if, but so if we let the people vote and they say yes, then it goes to our park. If we make the decision, then we have to have a commission and it doesn't go to them.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Um, if we were gonna put it on, on the ballot, when is the next election and how, how much time before that would you need to draw up something?
Your state legislature, which believes in local control unless, of course, there's an issue of local control, which is the time, they don't believe in local control, um, took the control of that away from you at this last session. So we now can only have special elections, I think, at three dates a year.
But we could get it on the next general.
Yeah, we were just thinking the next general.
Yeah.
To get it in November?
Next November.
Yeah, so we don't have one this month, or we would have plenty of time.
Twenty twenty-three?
Which is of course a whole lot cheaper.
Absolutely.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty-eight.
And, and nothing will stop you guys in the meantime from applying that business license requirement specifically to, uh, short-term rentals. And, you know, tracking them down, they're pretty easy to track down, you know, and you can knock on the door and, uh, and, and you, they, they are subject to your sales tax, so they should be paying sales tax. And, uh, the, the B and B companies, um, VRBO, Airbnb, there's a couple others. Uh, one of them has made a deal with Arkansas, they will collect the Arkansas tax. So they just need to be made aware of your local taxes as well, sales taxes. So, again, it's not much, but a little bit helps, you know, we can get that at least out of them and, and, and locate them. And a lot of times, you know, fire department wants to know, is this a safe place to be housing people? Um, you know, they may wanna subject them to a little bit of a, you know, you wanna at least have a fire extinguisher if you're, and of course, uh, you know, uh, smoke detectors if you're gonna be putting strangers in a house on a regular basis. And so sometimes, you know, it's nice to know where they are, so they can get a visit from the city and see if they're keeping a safe place. All that you can do without, without your AMP tax, of course.
Any other questions concerning that right now? So let's keep that in mind, uh, certainly don't wanna call a special election for, for that.
No.
But, but do, I think, I think we, it is something that we want to get brought up.
Do we have to pass something in order to have them have to apply for a license?
Uh, I think as we currently have it, yeah, I don't think we can require them to, we're requesting them to apply for a business license at Airbnbs?
If they're a business, why can't we? That's probably a question for Tom, but...
Yeah.
I mean, if they're considered a business and not a home, then they should be required to have a business license.
Yes, ma'am, I, I agree, and I think we just need, I think Kristin and I can look at our business license ordinance, and we can see if it's broad enough to apply right now, definition-wise. And I agree, once the planning commission gets its work done, uh, there's no doubt that there'll be a more specific definition of what they are in the city of West Fork, and so we'll be able to sort of piggyback off of that to get a business license too.
Okay.
But we might be able to do that.
That's one of the many ordinances that Heath and I have actually looked at that's very old, very out of date, we need to work on it anyway.
Okay, even the definition of who collects sales tax needs to be, that, Tom.
Right, um, so I, I mean, I think the whole ordinance needs to be looked at, but, but I think our zoning ordinance will correct a lot of that. The other part of that is enforcement, you know, uh, Airbnbs are not the only ones that we have a hard time getting a business license out of. So enforcement's hard if, if people aren't...
Isn't there a way to say you can't do it if you don't have a license? I mean, if it's a business, you can say you can operate.
I mean, we can, but I think our current ordinance, it's like a fifty-dollar fine if they don't, so...
Yeah, well, we need to make it more than fifty dollars.
Then that's why I say it's time to update that ordinance, and, and I don't know what, I'm sure Tom would have some input when we get ready to do that on how strict we can be about it, but that's part of our issue right now is we don't have the ability to really enforce much.
So if we make an ordinance that says we can, then, you know, we wanna, we, the fine should be much greater than a license would cost. So, I mean, chance and pay the fine or buy a license?
Okay, a couple of things to think about. Kristy will put that on her calendar, we'll revisit it, uh, maybe next March. That way, if we wanna take some action, we still have plenty of time, that would give you time to kinda think about it, ponder it. And I meant to bring, I'd pulled up Fayetteville and Springdale's, uh, off of their websites, had some information concerning that, I forgot to bring.
The AMP taxes?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we've discussed that, we've discussed the library land, um... So that was everything under other business. A couple of things under mayor's comments. So I sent out, uh, some pictures, did everyone get those? So, um, Jeff brought up to me, uh, that that is not the pictures that he showed us of what he wants to build. Uh, and I agree, it's not. So that picture is of what was currently on the property that he remodeled. That, um, if he comes to us looking to, to get some sort of a size variance to put smaller homes on that property, that's not what they're all gonna look like. He was wanting you to see the work he had done on the interior of what was currently there that he remodeled. So Jeff wanted me to point that out, that, that is not the pictures that he and I looked at, so, um... I have also received an email, and I just wanna get this out there so everyone's aware of it, that SWEPCO is looking and petitioning to do a rate increase. I do not... It's gonna be about a seventeen percent is what they're applying for.
Wow.
Um, they're saying that it is to pay for some, uh, some repairs, construction.
Something in Louisiana, we're gonna pay for.
Yeah, so it's that, and it's also, uh, to fund some, uh, clean energy projects, some solar projects, some wind projects. But they are petitioning the Public Service Commission for approximately a seventeen percent rate adjustment. Um, that's just, um, and Christie would probably, we can probably put something on Facebook, just, just mentioning that it's, um... Yes. Uh, thank you. That has nothing to do with us, but I just wanted everyone to be aware.
Please commit to that card.
Raises your SWEPCO power bill.
Believe me, we've, we've given, uh, similar...
West Fork City Council disagrees with seventeen percent.
So another thing I wanted to talk about, um, with Tom present, and I think we've, we've brushed past it once or twice before. But I talked about the Homestead subdivision and their sewer system. Uh, the way they put that sewer system in was with funds from an improvement district. And I would like, uh, I would like for the city to try to get some more information on improvement districts. And so, uh, the sewer system in, in the city of West Fork was put in through an improvement district bond. And essentially what happens is you get a bond, it attaches to the property, so the homeowner pays that as part of their property taxes. And if the homeowner sells the home, it stays as part of their property taxes. I don't know, I don't know how hard it is to get these, I don't know anything about how to do it. I just know that West Fork has, has received and participated in that in the past, and I know Homestead is currently participating in it. They still owe three hundred and some thousand dollars on that sewer system, and it's, it's attached to each parcel of land, and it's paid for as, as part of their property taxes. West Fork, West Fork only has sewer in the core of our city. If we were to ever get sewer, um, say at Butterfield, uh, and Stockburger, and up in that Davis, all that area. There's a lot of homes up there, there's hundreds of homes up there that are all on septic tanks. The city certainly can't afford to, to go run sewer line through that entire neighborhood. But we, we could, and it wouldn't be the city that necessarily, and Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that those citizens would have to agree to be a part of a improvement district before that could happen. So we wouldn't be imposing ourselves on it. But in order for the city to expand into some of those areas, I don't see any way we can do it without, um, a project like that. Tom, do you have any?
Yes, sir, I think, I don't disagree with you. There are improvement districts, I know that one of them happened in, uh, downtown Fayetteville last couple of years where, when you get the majority of the land, uh, in other words, one person has the highest value they own, or a majority of the value in that, in that district, even though there's a lot of little parcels, a lot of little owners, they can still be forced into it. I know you're not talking about doing that, though.
Right.
And then as far as, you know, could they borrow money on the, you know, on the taxes, of this property taxes they'd be collecting? They could, i- that would be sort of their decision to make. I think we would be the facilitator, we'd be saying, we would be the people that you could install if you can, if you can finance it. As far as us actually collecting the funds from that improvement district, I'm not familiar with that, and I'll get that way if we need to be. I've just never done that before.
So I don't think we would collect any funds from it, we, we would just have sewer taps and we would collect funds from that. It would just be a way for us to, to expand our system to, uh, a huge part of our town. But, but we would basically be the facilitator in maybe sending a letter to those residents in that area saying, the city would like for you to consider an improvement district if you would like more information. Something, something to that degree would be my thought.
Are, are there, you think, you guys feel like there are people up there who are wanting the system to come to them to? They wanna give off of septic into sanitary sewer?
No one has ever told me that, but, um...
We, we get that question. If, will it ever happen, when, close the land, when we're gonna do it, so we get that.
And I know that there's physics, of course, involved, but, but if you drive it up there, you know, y'all know about the three-hundred-foot rule.
Yes.
If that property's in within three hundred feet.
Well, I know how they're having to have three acres to put a septic system on, so... They're, they're using that valuable property if they split and sell sensitive property, so...
So it's not perking well up there?
Most of it does, you get up in the Elkins, through that area, it barely purrs.
And so when we...
But three acres is a requirement for septic.
Oh, it is, I thought it was just a...
You have to have a minimum of three acres of septic.
That's due to me too, well, isn't it?
Uh, so what we're looking, what I'm looking at, the way I'm looking at that is, when, uh, Nick was designing the sewer line, uh, Isaac and I talked, we talked with Nick about making sure that we were planning for future growth along Highway seventy-one, and where, where do we bring that line from along the river? Where do we bring it up to Highway seventy-one to catch future growth or to catch potential, um, Stockburger area? So we have that kinda planned out, we know where those areas would be, but there's obviously, there's, there's no way that the city can run sewer up there.
We have just kinda strategically got our access points.
Yes. So, I want, I just wanted to bring that up before the council, again, something to think about, something for future discussions. If, if you guys want more information on it, we can ask Tom to gather a little bit more information, so we can, he can share that with us at a future meeting. Thoughts?
So it's good to be informed, I mean, you know, exactly, know the ins and outs before we say yes.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not asking the council to do anything on that, other than just basically hear me out, John, so that, bring up a couple new topics.
Yeah, let's go. But if, like, if you ask Nick and Isaac, if, if y'all were just sort of asked about an area, and I don't know which areas we're talking about, but you guys sort of have in mind what's feasible, what's expensive, and then what's way out there, by way of these areas that are target-rich? Has anyone ever done like that kind of, it sounds like you've done a little bit of that analysis when you put in your access points, but...
Well, I think the initial cost to get up and across the highway is gonna be the huge expense. Because I mean, you're talking seventeen hundred foot just to get across the highway, probably.
And then so that, that arithmetic is basically how many customers, right, that, what they take in then?
We, we've been looking more right here in town, picking up the ones that are, that we can reach that are on septic right now and get them tied on, sanitary and South McKnight.
So that is something that we can throw some, some analysis at, just how many houses are up there, uh, that are potential tie-ons, uh, just to further the, the discussion.
If we had that area and the Homestead area, that would should help that ten thousand dollar deficit.
Oh, yeah, it would turn it, turn it upside down.
Yeah, it would, so you have to look at that too, you know, I mean, if this happens more than once, I mean, you know, we're gonna be looking at, yeah, that seventeen hundred across the highway is no big deal.
What if any areas are, would, would be looked at differently growth-wise if they had sanitary sewer as opposed to what they are now?
The Baker property down on South McKnight would be a potential big one. I mean, it, it's, it, it will come available, I'm sure, before long. I, I think that's where, that would be our easiest place to grow down that way. Be easier, be more cost-effective to expand sewer that way versus trying to cross the highway.
But I don't know...
And so, isn't it on that side of the highway anyway? I mean, we have it.
Where does it end, I guess?
Great Stone Lake. So north end or south end?
So it ends at Stanley right now, just north of the Baptist church, there's no sewer on the east side of Seventy-one hole.
And so what we're kinda looking at, um, Isaac, Isaac mentioned, uh, select bakers could be subdivided, but that would probably be put in by the, the contractor, right? The city would be, uh, trying to get a main line down that far. So an improvement district wouldn't really be something that we would look at for that. Uh, same thing with, by cemetery, uh, contractor would put most of that in, um, and the city would, would provide potentially a lift station. But in order to get a already established neighborhood system in, that's where we would look. But in order to get a already established neighborhood system in, that's where we would look at doing the improvement district. Or those residents would look at doing an improvement district.
That's, I mean, Nick and I can certainly look at terrible footage to build all that out.
Yeah.
Versus what customers may pick up.
Put a little bit of time into it. Get it, get us an estimate.
In your spare time.
In your spare time. But it's not anything that we need to to address immediately. It it's not, but it is something that we need to have in our back pocket so that we're aware that there are ways to expand the sewer without the city. Putting the entirety of the building. And the city needs to expand its sewer system.
Do we not plan for that from when we're putting it in?
When we were putting in the, our new line, yes, we have, we have strategic points for it to tie in, but we haven't built it out to Highway seventy-one. We're hoping developers will do a lot of that work for us. But we we currently have, and we've mentioned this before, but we have about fifteen hundred water customers, but only about seven hundred and fifty sewer customers. So that kind of goes to show that, you know, about half the town has sewer. And at some point, we need to tackle that question, how do we get sewer to the rest of the city limits? All right. Collins is telling me I beat that to death. We've had some people talking about West Fest, everything's moving forward with that.
Tell it till as we can.
Okay. Vendors are still interested? Okay, good. And if someone wanted to, is the committee full? Is your committee full?
Uh, we got a lot of volunteers, yes.
Okay. So you're not looking for any more?
No.
That's what I'm asking.
Anybody who wants help can, yes.
Okay. Okay, and contact you one day? All right. We are going to look at, our master gardeners are doing, they are hosting an event, when is that event?
It's May seventeenth.
May seventeenth?
May eighteenth through the twenty-first.
Next year? Oh, okay, I thought that was something that was coming up quick.
No, we're just trying to secure the money now.
Okay.
Excuse me. Because we try to get money in, so we figure out how much we have to charge everybody to come to offset the costs, so that's why we're trying to wrap stuff up.
Okay, so the city can't necessarily donate to the master gardeners. However. What I would like to get permission from the council for is, maybe the city can buy some supplies to help them with the event that they're hosting. They're going to do a tour through through West Fork, look at a couple gardens in West Fork. So basically I'm asking, can we? Can we spend some money on on some of the supplies to help with their tour?
What kind of supplies are you talking about?
I don't know.
Would you donate those supplies, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That word donate popped up again.
Sorry. No, we would not, we would, we would buy some supplies that perhaps could be used by the master gardener. How's that, is that any better?
There are, the public money, cities money, you're right, we can't donate, we cannot participate in in those kinds of private things, whether they be charitable or business. But there are things that are a public purpose, and, you know, we we can support those. Great example, lots of cities has a senior center where the city supports a senior center even though it doesn't own it, you know, because its citizens benefit greatly from having it. So we would need to think about what that project is, how it is beneficial to something, or replaces something that we would do ourselves. You know, that that maybe parks or streets would be doing, so. And then we could, we would be able to support that and say, hey, you guys are kind of volunteering to put this stuff in for us because we would have had to do it otherwise, or we would have done it otherwise. And that's why we would do that.
Okay, is council all right with that? We we look at some of that?
Yes.
You got any kind of dollar figure in mind?
No, I don't have a dollar figure in mind. I don't think it's going to be anything outrageous. The the gardens are very frugal with with their requests. Currently.
Try writing a blank check is what I'm saying.
No, we're not, we're not writing a blank check, we're just, we're looking to help them out in in promoting the city.
Because currently we have a garden, well, two gardens at the library, the one on the highway, and then the courtyard. We maintain the four-way stop sign, and then the rain garden at the, across from the current recycle center. So those are our projects, and we have about a dozen people who come work on it. And let's see, in twenty nineteen. Official master gardeners, that doesn't include extra people who come to help us, it was three hundred and ninety-seven hours, and then. We self-funded a lot of the actual plants that were put in, and then in twenty twenty during the pandemic, it was two hundred and eighty-six hours. And the city bought some great mulch for us, so things are looking a lot better. And we do it as a community service project and also for education, so if you go look, some of the things are identified so people can think about their own gardens and. How it affects the environment, things like that, butterflies. Am I leaving something out important, Jamie?
Well, you might say that this is the state prevention of master gardeners that will be coming that long weekend, three hundred to four hundred women from across the state and men.
Yeah, men too. And the bus tour is featuring Larry Galigan's Riverside Specialty Farm on McKnight. Which is an organic farm.
If they're going to do that, then there's a property right across the street from that that really needs the flower beds. You know, to make it look nice.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yeah.
I put three hundred and ninety-seven hours of mine.
We have to work on publicly owned land, and there has to be a water source, we can't work for individuals, so I don't get to count my hours.
So the master gardeners are, they're revamping some things, they're trying to get some things ironed out that that maybe weren't ironed out with the city in the past, there's some stuff that hasn't been documented. That that we're getting, we're getting documentation of what is expected, what what projects they work on. I think, I think the city should probably try to help with the promotion of of the master gardeners in some way, however we can. Not writing a blank check, but. Currently, the city helps with, we provide some water. They use some hoses of ours. We we haul some mulch for them, things like that, but they they do the spreading and whatnot, they they take care of all the gardens down at at the library, and then. They do have the rain garden over by the old recycle center. So. They're doing some stuff on city property. Like I said, we're not. We're not spending thousands, but maybe we can buy some supplies or some drinks or some promotional materials, something of that sort.
In your perspective, I mean, I get to see them work often, and we've been able to do library programs now for education, and we're even talking about doing that more, garden tours. We'll take kids out to smell lavender, I mean, it's it's definitely essential for the library, and we get to see it firsthand out our windows, so we appreciate that.
And we're going to be there tomorrow at eight, if you'd like to join us, eight to ten. We have always lived to have new people come out.
Is the council okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. So I think I'll close with this, and it's just a rumor. But I like to pass on rumors. I heard a rumor that we had someone either in or near the city turn down two million dollars on a piece of property. And I only say that for the point to say, to make the point that the developers are definitely here.
I had a contractor friend ask me if we, what I thought about building small apartments in West Fork. If that was needed.
So I have. I made a motion to, no. And I didn't even tell everyone where you were at, but I think everyone knew, didn't it? School's getting ready to start. But yeah, there there are, there's another developer that I talked to, I guess, last week, in the last week, that was asking about apartments, so. There's definitely some people asking about it.
Well, this one has the property in mind and everything, so.
So. I think they're trying to buy.
Well, do, I mean, how many apartments do we have in West Fork? Not many.
I don't know if we have any apartments.
Four, four, I know you have four.
Oh, I guess that's right, yeah.
That's great. But I didn't think we had any. Well, those up behind the city, up behind the city and on those.
There's very little vacancy.
Yeah.
Residential, and there's there's zero for commercials.
It is a city of Fayetteville aldermen that's purchasing our property.
Oh, it is.
That's probably because of all the West Fork and Fayetteville back and forth, you know, the city's growing.
Yeah, so it's it's definitely here, it's coming.
Depends on if people sell.
That's right, people have to sell before they can come, though.
Throw enough money at it, they'll sell.
That's right, that's right, there's, there's a happy medium in there somewhere.
If you get three mil, I'll sell.
Me too.
And so just for. Future reference. We don't have. I would, I would say, to keep in mind that the city operates, a lot of our operations come from sales tax, right? So we're, we're always, we're always thankful when we get a new business, and that business is generating sales tax. And so the rate of sales tax in the city of West Fork is three percent. And that is on gross sales, okay, so say a company comes in and they open up a business and their 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 gross sales are a hundred thousand dollars. So that's three, three thousand dollars to the city for the for the year, right? That's how that's going to be figured, for every hundred thousand sales, the city gets three thousand. So when you, when you're looking at a piece of property that is potential commercial. Especially if it's a business that's going to be collecting sales tax. I I just kind of want to put that in perspective of of how that, how that's generating money, so. The city is getting, they're collecting sales tax off of gross sales, but we're also. So in the case of somebody coming in and building something, that's also increasing the property value, thereby increasing the property tax. So the city is going to get a piece of property tax, it's it's small, but then the county is going to get a piece of property tax. The county then turns some of that property tax back to the city. And then the school gets funded as a part of that property tax as well, right? So so when you, when you think of a bare piece of property, whether somebody's putting apartments on it, there's no sales tax on that, but. But that property value is now going up, the school's now getting more money because of it, and the city's getting more money because of it. If it's, if it's a business that has sales tax, well, then the city is going to get that much more money.
But that al, that also potentially puts more people to spend money at businesses to increase.
Exactly, yes. Okay.
Like a snowball.
It is. It is a snowball, absolutely. All right, I'm finished, John.
I made a motion.
I have a question.
Now, now, you have a question?
What ever happened to the mural?
Uh, the mural is moving along quite nicely.
Where?
So were you on the council when the council said that it was okay for me to keep this a secret?
Yes.
Okay. So did we have a second? So. The artist that is doing the mural was doing some work out in Colorado during the middle of the summer, because it's cooler out there, and that's where she's from. She does a lot of silos in the mid, middle part of the country, Midwest, I don't know how you would describe that.
But you'll know when she starts.
So she's basically, where Shannon and I are going to talk in just a minute, and we are trying to get a schedule for the end of September, first of October for her to begin. Did you have any other questions?
I guess I'll have to continue to be patient.
We're getting close, so one thing we do need to make sure of is that we're going to get the spray foam on this in the next couple of weeks so that we can tell her that, yes, it will be ready. Yes. Okay, fantastic.
If the building's not properly insulated, it's very, very bad for a mural, so that's kind of what.
So we, and we've talked before, we we repainted it, and they're they're supposed to be doing some. Some foaming on the inside, they haven't been able to get to that yet for a couple of different reasons. So we've been waiting on that contractor to, they're basically going up in between the ceiling tiles and spraying everything with a sealant from the inside. And we need that to be completed before she can start, but we were kind of waiting until she got back from this trip out in the farmland. So she is, do you have any of those old pictures, Shannon? Of where she painted those silos and stuff, do you have any of that on your phone?
Um, I can pull that.
You should email those to us.
I can.
Email them the silos and stuff, if you have, if you still have, they're amazing.
We already motioned.
We want to know if you guys had sat for your initial portrait so that we can get you in the mural. Floating it. Do we have anything else? All those in favor? If you have a motion, say all in favor, say yes, those who have no. Misty?
Second, first lifter?